Monthly meeting of the San Bernardino International Airport. Regular meeting held today Wednesday, June 26th. At this time, we will go ahead and accept public comments. We ask that you hand your slip into the clerk. While we wait for more slips, we ask that you please take your seat. And we will also call roll. So if the clerk would call the roll on the commission members.
Please state your name for the record. A member from the city of Colton.
Frank Namaro.
Thank you. A member from the city of La Melinda.
Ovi Pesca.
A member from the county of San Bernardino, third district.
Dawn Rao.
Thank you. Members from the city of Highland.
Penny Wilburn.
Thank you. And members from the city of San Bernardino.
John Valdivia.
Thank you.
Very good. Again, we will go ahead and hear public comments before we enter the closed session. Again, if you are here for public comments, we ask that you speak. Fill out a speaker slip. At this time, I'll go ahead and start calling individuals up. And because there are quite a few individuals who want to speak, listen for your name. And if you would, just stand on deck. That way, we can expedite the process. Our first speaker is Tom Dolan, followed by Cory Chavez, followed by Yvonne Marquez. Mr. Dolan, welcome.
Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Tom Dolan. I'm here as the executive director of Inland Congregations United for Change. We are an organization of 62 congregations in San Bernardino Riverside County. We have 16 congregations here that are members in the city of San Bernardino. I'm also a resident of San Bernardino. I've lived here for 20 years, and I've raised a family. Our congregations are concerned about the development here, the East Gate development, because of the impact as religious leaders. We're very aware of poverty in our region, and we're concerned about jobs that do not sustain a family. We're also concerned about the environmental issues that impact the quality of life of our families. My three children and my wife are at school and have been there now for eight years down the road at Central Avenue at the Norton Science and Language Academy, just east of Waterman. My wife is a full-time phys ed teacher, and so she's outdoors all the time. My three children and myself just got over another bout of our chronic bronchitis, which led all of us to pneumonia. My wife also has pneumonia. And we're not sure exactly what the cause is, but we do know that it's related to the quality of air in our environment. Living in a place where, when our kids enrolled eight years ago at that school, and we helped found the school, it was countryside. Now, it's completely surrounded by warehouses on all sides. Trucks are coming and going at all the time. And the East Gate project will bring hundreds of more trucks and dozens of more flights right over that school and the surrounding community. There's many, many families that live in that area that will be directly impacted by the environmental issues there. Also, we're concerned of the people who are working in the industries related to East Gate, both the construction of the project. We have members of our congregation. I was with one of them the other day who works laying rebar in non-union job, building these warehouses, and the same type of construction that will be built as a result of East Gate. And it's not a family-sustaining job that he has. He earns $15 an hour. He has part-time incomplete benefits, and it's a part-time, not-secure position. So what's he and the hundreds of other families, or thousands, they say, going to do when they're, you know, when the job ends, they have no career, they're impacted by the environmental impact? So we're here to request that you pay attention to and work with the community coalition that is working to improve the East Gate project so that it benefits our community and helps sustain jobs.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Dolan.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Cory Chavez, followed by Yvonne Marquez, followed by Dejanae Shaw. Ms. Chavez, welcome. Three minutes.
Okay. I wanted to say, I live on East Rialto between Tippecanoe and Lena, and I've lived there for almost 30 years now. When we bought on the street, it was because it was so quiet, country territory, with pleasant views everywhere you look. I actually have a half an acre and 20 kinds of fruit. Norton, the Air Force Base was still open, but it was never a problem. I always expected there to be airplane flights, but I never expected what has happened now. My neighborhood is being completely destroyed. My little two-lane street was never meant for dozens of diesel trucks that transverse it daily. And there's also a warehouse on the Lena Road end that makes noise from something 7:00 in the morning to close to midnight. It's a paperpacking warehouse, just so you know, 900-something East Rialto. We are worried about our health and our older homes being constantly rattled. I originally thought that the best-case scenario I could come up with would be that somehow my little small street would be declared a non-truck route. But just this week, I found out that the north end of the street is being pretty much purchased completely, I don't know how completely, by a commercial developer. The north side that I live on is 100% residential with many families. So for me, it's my worst nightmare come true. I don't know where I'm going to go. There was sort of nothing like what I had. So I just want you to think in your craze to build all these warehouses, it is time to consider the people you're affecting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yvonne Marquez, followed by, I hope I'm saying this right, Dejanae Shea, and then Carlos Bonuelos. Ms. Marquez, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I am here as a parent and a student. I'm a lifelong resident of San Bernardino County. I have asthma myself. I have almost my whole life. I'm also here as a public historian, working on a project that has been documenting the changes in San Bernardino over time. And with this project, San Bernardino has a huge chance to make an impact on the poverty that is so rampant in the area. I'm asking you to please, please consider jobs and the type of jobs that are coming into this area. The citrus industry was once vibrant, and I'm sure you know Riverside County was once one of the wealthiest nations per capita in the country. And now we stand on one of the poorest. Our air quality is terrible. Our children are sick, and we don't have good jobs. This is the chance to start changing that. We're asking you to listen. We're asking you to hear us and understand the impact that this project can have. It can set a standard that the rest of the warehouses and the logistics industry can follow, to promise the good jobs, to promise changes with environmental electric trucks. So thank you for hearing, and please take into those considerations.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Shaw, welcome, ma'am, followed by Carlos Bonuelos, followed by Carla Gutierrez.
Good afternoon. My name is Dejanae Shaw, a nurse and resident of San Bernardino County. I took liberty of writing my notes on my phone because I didn't want to just speak freely. I didn't want to forget anything. So thank you for your time in advance. We cannot stop the expansion of this airport, nor do we want to. We know that there is a possibility that great jobs may arise from this expansion, and that alone will aid in a growing need for jobs in this region, as we all know. This city has been in economic downfall for decades, resulting in homelessness amongst many more travesties. Air traffic is increasing, raising concern about local pollution and its adverse health effects on the people living in the vicinity of large airports. This has been evidenced by the Los Angeles as well as Ontario international airports. The highest risk to emission exposure are occupational exposure, meaning the people that actually work directly at these airports, and also the surrounding neighborhoods due to proximity. Jet exhaust is one of the main concerns at an airport, and will have a health and will have a health impact, particularly on the respiratory tract, which includes the lungs. This expansion cannot be made without taking into account the expansion of those adverse effects, both for workers who operate in the airport and for the surrounding neighborhoods. Most important, it is our duty to not only protect ourselves and our health, but the health of our unborn children, their children, and theirs as well. I encourage you to position yourself as a member of this community for an effective community benefits agreement. And I'd also like to say, just as a nurse, you constantly see on a daily basis the increased amount of patients that come through the hospital, not only at an adult age, but as children, newborns that are suffering from respiratory infections. And this airport will have a negative impact on the respiratory tract if you guys don't implement some type of structure that'll hold people accountable to keep people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carlos Bonuelos, Carla Gutierrez, and Yasi, sorry, Kavanaugh or Cavazade. Carlos, welcome.
I'm going to be translating for.
Welcome. You're recognized for three minutes.
Si, buenas tardes a todos. Como mi inglés no es muy fluido, necesitaremos el apoyo de la traducción para mejor explicación.
Good afternoon. Just as my English is not that good, I'm going to be translated for Mr. Carlos.
Bien. Tenemos dos años aproximadamente de vivir aquí en San Bernardino. Pero antes, vamos 14 años viviendo en la ciudad de Lenox, que está al pie del aeropuerto de Los Ángeles. Por eso, la experiencia que tenemos de lo que se vive en este aeropuerto tan cercano, pues son experiencias muy importantes a valorar.
I have been living here in San Bernardino for two years, but I've also prior to that lived for 14 years by the Los Angeles Airport. And those experiences of living by the airport, I think, is something very valuable to take into consideration as to what's happening here.
Si, continuando. En esos 14 años que vivimos en la ciudad de Lenox, pues experimentamos como ciudadano común las inconveniencias que existen de vivir pues al pie de un aeropuerto donde hay tanto tráfico aéreo. Y en realidad, las experiencias son mucho mayor, más negativas que positivas, hablando de ciudadanos comunes, que viven en una comunidad tan cercana. Esas incomodidades, pues son principalmente con los ruidos, que son bastante fuertes, incluso cuando los aviones despejan al inverse en el guardia hacia el mar, hacia la población, hasta las alarmas de los carros se activaban. También experimentamos durante ese tiempo problemas aditivos, sí? Aug pausa.
Gracias. The 14 years I lived in Lenox by the airport as a common citizen, there was a lot of inconvenience that we experienced, including air traffic. There was more negative impacts than positives, including loud noises and strong noises when the airplane was flying above, that even our car alarms would go off.
Cabe señalar que en aquel aeropuerto, en esa comunidad, aunque hay programas de apoyo para instalar vidrios o pruebas de alto sonido, pero no a todas las personas les llega al mismo tiempo, y eso es un poco tardado, por lo cual, la mayoría de la población experimenta, pues, grandes inconveniencias, grandes problemas. Otra de las razones es de que cuando hay control de vuelos que no pueden volar a cualquier hora de la madrugada o del día, es un poco menos tóxico, porque ese programa sí lo tienen allá, pero aún así, traer pues muchas dificultades, pues por los ruidos y la contaminación.
And even though there were programs to install soundproof windows in the homes, they weren't installed at the same time, so there was massive delays. What we did notice, though, was having a curfew for flights did help reduce the toxicity of these flights, but there were still a lot of noises and pollution that we had to deal with.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bonuelos. Your time is up. Our next speaker is Carla Gutierrez, followed by Yasi, followed by Abraham Gastelum.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Carla Gutierrez, and I lived in the LAX area as well, growing up in middle school and high school. I remember having to take my taekwondo classes indoors. As you could imagine, it could be full of stuffiness and just not a very pleasant place to workout because the air pollution there was really terrible. I was surprised when one of the members mentioned that the air quality here in San Bernardino is worse than in the LAX area. That completely blew my mind, and I was astonished, and I couldn't believe, since it's more rural over here than in the LAX area, not only counting the traffic from the airport, but also all the traffic, the automotive traffic. My husband and I kind of like started fleeing to the east. We moved to Lynwood, and then from there to Ontario, and now to San Bernardino, looking for a better place for us to create a family, to start a family. So it kind of like breaks my heart knowing that this could be, San Bernardino could be a really nice city if we worked together as a community. And even if we cannot put a stop to this project, I would ask you guys with my heart on my hand to please take into consideration the lives that are to come, so that we could have better air quality and better jobs for those people. My parents have worked in the warehouse industry for almost pretty much all their lives, and they're not very well jobs. They're not supportive, or they cannot support a family just on the warehouse job. So please take that into consideration. If we get jobs that they're good jobs, and they're not just the minimum that might be required by the law, but they're dignified types of jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yasi, followed by Abraham. Yasi, Abraham, moving on to, oh, I'm sorry. Hi. And where's Abraham? Let's get Abraham on deck, sir. You're right on the front row here.
Where's your man?
Welcome.
It's Abram.
Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Yasi. I'm an organizing representative with the Sierra Club, specifically on the My Generation campaign. We represent enforcing and empowering communities working together on finding a sustainable environmental future, especially regarding clean energy and clean transportation. We also see a relationship between green jobs, infrastructure investments, and a transition off of dirty fuels. So today, I'm going to be a little hinting at that with the project that's been mentioned by previous colleagues that have gone before me on the East Gate Logistics Center. Last summer, San Bernardino experienced 87 straight bad air days, of ozone air days, and this summer is going to be looking pretty similar to that, if not worse. I don't know if folks could tell, driving down here, the mountains and the visibility today were extra poor. As the sunlight cooks, all the emissions that we see from trucks, car traffic, and cargo equipment on-site, these warehouses that we've seen all around this area, we're going to be breathing in that ozone, that ground-level ozone is going to be trapping in air pollution, and we'll be breathing it in more. We've already been ranked as the worst air quality. San Bernardino County has already been ranked as the worst air quality for ozone in the country. So I have a lot of evidence to, you know, cite why our air is so bad, but I really want to hone in on that there is a solution to this, and it's called a community benefits agreement. And it looks like leveraging, as you're leveraging your power with all the folks here, on good jobs, on infrastructure improvements for our communities that live right next to the airport. You've got three schools right here. We can be working together on seeing solutions in our communities. And alongside the community benefits agreement, my colleagues and I at the Center for Community Action Environmental Justice and Earth Justice just submitted a letter to the airport. I think you might be getting it, Mr. Burrows, or you've already received it, from our attorneys at Earth Justice, requesting that you all here at the Airport Authority work with the Federal Aviation Administration on a scoping meeting. Now, scoping meeting is traditionally done by air scientists, environmental scientists, and other experts to see the environmental impacts on the project. And at this level, we're asking for the FAA to propose, under the FAA's language, because this project has a lot of controversy. So we hope we can see a response to this letter, and we're hoping that you all can really genuinely hear out the concerns that community has regarding this project and the community benefits that can come with it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Abram, my apologies, sir. Welcome, Mr. Gastelum.
I'll begin with a bit of a declarative right now. It is horrifically heartbreaking to observe such blatant disregard from the development of the East Gate Cargo Logistics Center on the surrounding communities that will suffer its impact. Hi, my name is Abram, and I will be standing here in solidarity with the San Bernardino communities to demand that the Federal Aviation Administration execute a scoping process for an environmental assessment that will address and assess the environmental impacts that will contribute to the further pollution of the air in this region of the South Coast Air Basin, a region that has the worst ozone pollution in the country. We ask that this development process include a community benefits agreement that will guarantee not only the mitigation of negative environmental impacts, but also funding be allocated for the too-close-for-comfort schools and local residents to receive soundproofing and air filters. Likewise, that jobs be prioritized and assured for community members, including a living wage and safety standards that meet and exceed OSHA standards of protection. What we request is clean air, good jobs, and safer livelihoods. Aire que está limpio, buenos trabajos, y seguro para nuestros medios de sustento. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jody Eisenberg, followed by Suni Ivy, followed by Louis Lopez. Welcome, Ms. Eisenberg. And if we could get Suni Ivy on the front row, please.
Hi, my name is Jody Eisenberg. I live here in San Bernardino. I've lived in this area my entire life. I watched as this community fell into the biggest hole ever because of the convergence of the three events that sent us down the economic rat hole. The loss of the good jobs at Norton Air Force Base, the closing of Kaiser Steel in Fontana, although it improved our air. We lost great union jobs, and the same with the closing of Norton. And then the freeway, which used to require everybody going to Las Vegas from Los Angeles had to go through San Bernardino. This was a thriving community. You could see across the valley after we started working on our smog problem. In the 1960s, when I attended Cal State San Bernardino, you could not see the mountains until you got right on campus, which is right on the foothills there here in San Bernardino. We're doing it again. We need you on this commission to pay attention to the needs of our community. You are sending us down that rat hole, or keeping us in that rat hole again. Unless you pay attention to the need for good jobs, I'm tired of shopping at the 99-cent store. I want Harris Company back again, but none of those kinds of stores will come here because we do not have people who are earning a living that can provide them housing, as well as the ability to shop in any kind of store other than 99-cent store or a thrift store. If we open another one of those manis just opened on Sterling where Target used to be, I can't believe we let that Target leave this area. But you have a chance now to change that. With a community benefits agreement, you can ensure that people working will get paid a living wage, a real wage on which you can support a family, put a roof over your head, and actually live. This community deserves that. I'm tired of driving down all the streets that are clogged by trucks that are taking things back and forth to the warehouses. And you know as well as I know that those jobs are going to be automated in the next 10 years. So unless you make sure that this community has some benefits and not all the detriment from these agreements, you're dooming us to a future of living in a community that cannot sustain itself. This is an incredible responsibility, as well as an amazing opportunity you have, and I beg you to take advantage of that opportunity. Make this a place that I'll be happy to live in again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Suni Ivy, followed by Louis Lopez.
Good afternoon. I'm Sunny Ivy. Thank you for your time. I'm an assistant professor at UC Riverside. My views are mine, not those of the school. My expertise is in air quality monitoring and modeling, as well as attributing the pollution to specific sources. And this expansion will inevitably increase the emissions of NOx, VOCs, and diesel PM in this area, as well as contribute to additional formation of ozone. So this is due to the increased truck volume and jet fuel burning and building energy consumption that will be associated with this project. Further, aircraft activities are associated with increased cancer risk, decreased prenatal health, and these warning signs are actually posted on the jet wave as you board the aircraft. So what can we do to alleviate these issues? So through a community benefits agreement, we can ensure that we push for electric infrastructure at the development. This is ensuring that trucks can plug in and that we're relying on cleaner fuels. Number two, you can insist that the development do its own fence line monitoring. That means paying for the equipment necessary to measure the pollutant changes around this area. Also, the developers can invest in educational opportunities for the people that live here. That means training people at the community colleges in automation and in those jobs. Therefore, there's a pipeline from the community college to the jobs at the work at the center. Lastly, we're going to ask that we have an additional meeting along with the FAA to discuss the scoping of the environmental assessment, and this promotes transparency and ensures that the proper technical approaches are used for these assessments. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Louis Lopez, followed by Samuel Rodriguez. Welcome, Mr. Lopez.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Louis Lopez. I'm a business agent for the Ironworkers Local 433 for Riverside and San Bernardino, also a resident of San Bernardino. In my role, I'm actually involved with a lot of different developments throughout Riverside and San Bernardino, and it frustrates me as a business agent representing 5,300 members that typically we get some of these big corporate players that come in, such as Amazon, and a lot of times you find out that they do go with the lowest bidder. That doesn't really benefit the community. I know myself, if I were to go purchase a car, I'm not going to just purchase the car just because it's the cheapest car on the lot. I've got to look for long-term, you know, is it going to do, how's it going to maintenance? Is it going to give me long-term investment? Is it going to give me a return? So a lot of times when we see these developments, and they tend to go with the lower bidder, a lot of those lower bidders are out of state. They're unskilled workforce. They also are followed with a lot of ongoing cases, such as wage theft, such as OSHA violations, such as workman comp violations. They tend to cheat the system. Not only cheating the system, but they're really cheating the community. And you could see here in San Bernardino, I think right now, we're at a good place to actually involve all of the groups, environmental groups, the faith base, the different labor unions represented here, both public and private, also the building trades, and even the families here in the community, to kind of come together and see if we could develop a community workforce agreement that'll benefit the community, not just so Amazon could come in here and say, hey, we just profited $300 million in the last quarter. Well, tired of hearing about that boast. Let's boast about what you guys did for the local community, you know, developing a pathway for some of these youth to get into some of these programs that develop them with welding. for some of these youth to get into some of these programs that develop them with welding skills, some blueprint reading, some blueprint drawing, some, you know, typical skills that can set them towards the building trades that are good-paying jobs. When Amazon comes in and wants to do $15 an hour and boasts about that, I don't know a family that can really qualify to buy an affordable home at $15 an hour and then go out there and maybe have a date night, send their kids to some sports, or go on a vacation once a year. You just can't do that on $15 an hour. When we talk about a community benefit agreement, that's what it's about, benefit in the community. I'd like to see this board work together with the coalition that we're starting to develop here.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Samuel Rodriguez, followed by Gloria Martinez, followed by Odin Contreras. Mr. Rodriguez, before you begin, we do have public comments later on, so we're going to take these last couple here, and we've got to get into closed session. So I just want to alert our public, we appreciate your comments. So Samuel Rodriguez, Gloria Martinez, Mr. Contreras, and then we'll break into closed session.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to come and hear the community out tonight. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Highland, which is just down the road, and I'm here today to implore you all to do as much as you can to protect our communities from the harmful effects that we may be impacted with this logistics center here. Jobs are very also important to me. It's a big issue here in our community, and we need good jobs. I used to work for Amazon for two years, so I have firsthand experiences how it feels to work in these huge warehouses and how it's not enough for our communities to support themselves, or how the other people have mentioned, to support families. I fortunately now work for Omni-Trans, which is a unionized job, so I'm one of the few very fortunate peoples here in the community to have a good job that's unionized. I just wish that these types of jobs would be more available to our communities, which they're not. So if we work together to craft a community benefits agreement that benefits all of us with community concerns brought to the table, I feel that we may be able to get our communities into the right path in moving forward and get us, all of us, out of this depression. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Gloria Martinez, followed by Odin Contreras. Martinez? And Mr. Contreras, is that you, sir? Welcome, ma'am.
Commissioners, may I just ask, because I am translating, is it possible to get an additional minute or so? Because since I am translating, to give her time to say her comments.
The rules say that it's three-minute public session, so we'll recognize you for three minutes, and then we'll finish when the timer ends, and if you're, we won't interrupt you, we'll finish that last statement, but we do have a lot of business to conduct, so you're recognized for three minutes, ma'am. Please go ahead.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Gloria Martinez, y soy mamá soltera de un menor todavía que mantener.
Good afternoon, my name is Gloria Martinez. I am a single mother with a child that's still a minor.
Yo lo único que les pido es controlar un poco el tráfico. Lamentablemente me tocó ver dos accidentes, uno donde una mamá recogiendo, paseando un poco con sus hijos, perdió la vida por un fuego atropellada.
One of the things I want to say with this project is the need to control traffic. I have seen two accidents where one mother lost her life as she was just walking her children, and she was run over by a vehicle.
Y el segundo accidente fue saliendo el niño de la escuela, iba caminando, y un conductor que iba a alta velocidad no se dio cuenta y se llevó al niño. Lamentable, digo, afortunadamente, el niño salió bien.
The second accident that I was witness to, it was a child that had just gotten off school and was walking. In a vehicle, the driver was speeding and hit this child. Luckily, the child did not lose his life.
Eso es algo que a mí me preocupa porque los niños, hay varios que los padres no tienen el tiempo para llevar al niño a la escuela como para recogerlo. Entonces, los niños tienen que caminar solos.
And this is a big concern for me because, you know, unfortunately, due to the need of the parents not being able, needing to work and not being able to take their children to school or pick them up, a lot of these children have to walk by themselves to school.
En cuestión de los trabajos, me gustaría, y les pido de mucho favor, que hagamos a un lado las agencias, porque las agencias no nos pagan días festivos, no nos pagan días de vacaciones, y nos piden acumular aparte arriba de mil horas para podernos pagar un día festivo o unos días de vacaciones.
Regarding jobs, I would like to say that the need to eliminate the use of staff agencies, because actually, as a former staff agency worker, they don't give us any vacation time or paid holidays. To qualify for paid holidays, we have to work at least 1,000 hours.
Cuando ya estás a punto de completar las horas y uno ya está gustoso, oh, voy a recibir una semana de vacaciones. Lamentablemente, te dicen, oh, se acabó el trabajo, no te ocupamos.
And unfortunately, my experience has been that once you almost complete that 1,000 hours to qualify for paid holidays or vacation, and you're excited looking forward to having one week of paid vacation, they lay you off and say that there's no more need for you before you can get that time.
La otra cosa, yo tuve dos accidentes laborales, y lamentablemente, ahorita yo estoy destabilitada por el estado, y yo si quiero regresar a un trabajo, buscar trabajo, pues yo tengo que poner la capacidad que tengo en mis manos, y simplemente nadie me da trabajo. Entonces, pues también necesitamos, yo, por ejemplo, en lo personal, al igual que yo, hay muchos que necesitamos un trabajo, poder desarrollar para llevar el pan a la casa.
And I would say that, you know, also working warehouses, I received two work injuries. I'm on disability right now by the state. I want to be able to return to work, and, you know, every time I list my injuries, I'm not hired. So that's something that we need to look at for our residents here to be able to move forward. And I would just like to add that she, Gloria, has lived 11 years as a resident of San Bernardino and four years as a resident in Colton.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Supervisor.
I just want to make sure that we're, we don't have too many speakers that are non-English speaking, but from a legal counsel perspective, do we, should, seems like we should give beyond...
This is a, this is a subject that there, we do not currently have a policy that deals with multilingual and translation services. You certainly can give additional time. We don't have a policy right now, so what I would suggest is whatever you do now, you're going to want to keep going into the future. You don't want to have a one-off. So if it's the pleasure of the board or of the commission, then you certainly can give extra time. What you should not do is give more than double the amount of time.
Right.
Because if you have a three-minute speaker, arguably, you're going to have three minutes of translation.
Okay.
So you don't want to give an unlimited amount of time, but at the pleasure of the commission, it's up to you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Huber. Why don't we do this? We will study the issue for future meetings. We certainly appreciate the public comment, and we are accommodating as best as we can. Mr. Contreras, you're recognized for three minutes, you're welcome.
Thank you for having me today. So I'm, my name is Odin. I currently work at Alta Vista Credit Union. Y'all probably know it because we call it Northern Regional Credit Union. So I'm very aware of this area. I've been living here actually for two years, so I'm kind of new. But when I first noticed out here, I was like, wow, where are the mountains? You know, like, why is it smoggy? And I just thought because the clouds, you know, were a little bit elevated up. But then somebody cleared it up to me, like, no, this is our smog, this is what we're breathing in. I'm like, wait, isn't this happening in China? Like, isn't our smog worse than China or at the equivalent right now? And so I just wanted to please ask you to pass our community benefits agreement and just consider it and think about the people, and even yourselves, actually. Y'all are people as well, correct? We all are. So if you have any kids or grandchildren or whatever, you don't want them to be living in the next 10 or 15 years, you know, in this very bad polluted area because, you know, some rules got decided to pass, and y'all wanted to upgrade this airport expansion. I would ask of y'all to just consider, you know, looking into your own personal lives, as well as the lives of the community that are living here, the people who want to live in this city, because there's so much beauty in this city. There is. People talk so much crap about San Bernardino, how, you know, it's trash, it's ghetto, it's ratchet. All the LA people, you know, look down at us, but we are really strong people, we are hard-working people, we're people who want every day to make successful lives and are for the future generations to have good and successful lives as well. These jobs need to be good jobs for the people in the community in order to, in order to have living wages. Amazon's paying people $5, $15 an hour, that's a big promo, not a really good promo as I see, because those wages aren't even enough to, you know, buy a nice house or anything like that. So I have very experienced financial details, and I know what it takes to have a living wage, and I know what is needed in our community to be a successful community. So once again, I'm just pleased asking you to consider the community benefits agreement, and anything along with the lines of that, that the Sierra Club or any other organizations around here are going to pass, please just take into consideration all the offers and good things in the community, as well as taking consideration into your own families and our own community. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. We will now break into closed session, and we will reconvene upon conclusion. Okay, very good. We are returning from our closed session. Mr. Huber, is there anything to report out?
Mr. Mayor, there's no reportable action taken in closed session.
Very good. We begin our open session. I will ask Supervisor Rao to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Please stand and join me in salute to the flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Very good, thank you, Supervisor Rao. Item number E, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No items, sir.
Very good, moving on to item F.
Mr. President, due to the nature of the lateness of today, could I ask for agenda item, I believe, number 11 to be postponed to a future meeting?
Sure, if there are no objections.
Who's the one that I asked staff to bring forward, which I very much appreciate?
Sure.
I just don't want to rush budget or anything else today, and that one, I think, can wait.
Move it to the next meeting?
Do you mind?
Very good.
Thank you.
There's no objections? All right, very good. Conflict of interest, item number F, are there any members that need to disclose? Seeing none, item G, informational items. Our first presenters, executive directors, report, Mr. Burrows.
So I do have a few here. I'd actually like Ms. Pritchett to provide a personnel update briefly and an insurance update, and then we have some year-end highlights that we'll consolidate for you. So Kat, if you would.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. As directed by the commission in June, we are working through a national recruiter to recruit for an experienced development director. We did have a call with the recruiter this morning, and at his recommendation, we have made a minor tweak to the job, the job title, from development director to director of business development, and we are going to repost this position for an additional two weeks. We have qualified candidates, but we feel that adding the business component to the title will actually open that up to more opportunities for us. The updates on this position, as we work through the recruitment, will be provided in the executive director's weekly updates that you receive via email, and we will have updates in the August meeting as well. I'm always available to answer any questions about this recruitment as it, as we go.
Can you tell us how many people they've actually have applied through their system?
We're looking at total candidates versus qualified candidates.
Well, whatever you want to.
The recruiter's sending us those final numbers today. It closes this afternoon with the final first round of reviews, so we'll get those numbers tomorrow.
Can you give us a ballpark, is it two people or 500?
I did not ask the recruiter today.
Okay.
I asked just for recommendations moving forward, but I'd be happy to ask him, once I get the final numbers, I can send those to you.
Okay.
Absolutely. In addition, the FBO team has added one line service technician, Richard Ferrardo, has started his employment here on Monday, and we welcome him to the team. And on a sad note, our SBD family is losing a valued member, Sharon Leon, who is our property manager, is retiring in the middle of the month. She's a valued member of our team, and she will be dearly missed, and I know Mike had a couple of comments that he wanted to make for Sharon as well.
So Sharon is, lovely Sharon is here in the audience, and I just want to say a few things about her. She and I go back a few years. When she met me, I didn't have gray hair, and I was the diamond in the rough, but I don't want her leaving without a little memento of her hard work here, because having her, you know, come from county real estate over to join our team has just been a blessing for all of us, and so I couldn't think of a better way to say thank you than providing her with a little memento from the staff to express our sincere appreciation for your dedicated service. So you've got to come forward, and we have this diamond reminder of her achievements expressing our appreciation, and I want to make sure that you leave with that in hand. So, thank you so, so much.
My, thank you, Mike.
And then I'm going to come around and give you a hug.
Okay. [laughter]
Congratulations. We do appreciate our staff, and we wish you a lot of happy years in your retirement. Mr. Burrows, does that conclude your report?
So we have in your packet, and in respect for your time, commissioners, we won't go through every bit of this, but I wanted Mark to hit a couple of year-end highlights just quickly for you, and then at your discretion, we'll move on. Mark?
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so just a little bit of context. The first slide here, really just a broad overview of where the airport and surrounding community was when the base closed. There were 15,000 total jobs lost, 1.9 billion lost in economic output, and a whole lot of work has been done since that time to bring jobs back and to bring the infrastructure and the jobs back to the community. So a direct comparison on the next slide here is total jobs, total direct jobs that were lost due to the closure of Norton Air Force Base, which is 10,000. And we're very proud to say that as of 2016, we exceeded that number, and as of today, 2018 numbers just came in, so hot off the press. 12,645 direct jobs created in the project area. So here's a quick summary of what those, what the jobs coming back to the former Norton Air Force Base looks like, and you can see in 2016, we finally exceeded that 10,000 jobs lost, and it continues to climb. So the two operational units on the airport, the airport itself and Lux of Air SBD are the two brands that are promoted here, and these are the different market segments at the airport, and of course, the performance metrics that are tied to those different market segments. And this is a quick overview of where the different business segments are in the airport. And so some of those performance metrics they'll touch on, lease revenue continues to climb, essentially doubled where we were at in 2016. The last mark there for the current fiscal year that we're in is, I want to point out that that is not complete, that is through the month of May. Our fiscal year ends at the end of June. But lease revenues continue to climb, just as Sharon is leaving us, has done a heck of a job in property management and fulfilling the goals of the agency. Some of the aeronautical fees continue to climb as aircraft activity continues to increase at the airport. So these are, this is a common metric that's used in the industry, and it's a growing source of economic activity at your airport. And this next slide touches on the aeronautical activity taking place at the airport, so this is when an aircraft takes off or lands. It's called an aircraft operation, and that continues to climb, particularly since 2014. One of the quickly growing market segments at the airport is commercial aircraft, and this is primarily related to air cargo, continues to increase since 2017. And one of the things that means for us is additional grant dollars from the FAA that we can use to invest in... that means for us is additional grant dollars from the FAA that we can use to invest in facilities and infrastructure at the airport, so new runways and taxiways and, you know, replacement of pavements that are, do have a lifespan associated with them. Flights clearing customs also continue to rise. We had a record year last year, 243 international flights. Touching on capital projects, air cargo was a major investment last year with the addition of FedEx. And this touches on the growth in air cargo, which in 2017 was at four flights a week, grew to 63 weekly flights last week in peak seasons and right now, we are at 29 flights a week. MROs are an important part of the airport. There are currently four healthy MROs at the airport. Unical is the largest of those, but there are also some other solid and longstanding customers, or longstanding MRO customers at the airport and that has led to the addition of new aircraft ramp that was constructed last year by Unical, one of our MROs. Corporate aviation, so this is the Luxevere brand and it's got its own performance metrics that includes fuel sales and they also have lease revenues and ramp activity performance metrics and you can see one of the growing segments is growth in gross fuel revenue and you can see that has continued to grow along with your growing airport as well as gross profits related to fuel sales. And we've seen an uptick in corporate aviation activity on the airport, so these are the business jet types. And I will hand it over to Ms. Pritchett to give you an overview of, oh, I'm sorry, this one wasn't on my slide below me. One of the other growth segments, one of the other targets we've been doing is reaching out to new partners and we continue to partner with companies such as JetX, the Abu Dhabi Airport System, Epic Fuels, Mercy Air, these are some of the partnerships that have been entered into in the last fiscal year. And now I'll hand it over to Ms. Pritchett to touch on SPD Fest.
Thank you, Mark. As reported after the event last year, SPD Fest 2018 was a huge success. We saw record-breaking numbers last year for our two-day event. We had about a 33% increase in concession sales, excellent media coverage, happy sponsors and no reported incidents. So in the books for us, that's a huge success and we appreciate your ongoing support of the event and our staff who coordinate the event. We're kicking off 2019 and we're happy to hear any suggestions or recommendations as we move forward. Thank you.
And that concludes our reports.
Thank you very much. We appreciate staff for their hard work and their diligent efforts on providing Commission members an update and we applaud the many successes that we have garnered over the past year and we're very grateful. Moving on to item number C, a report on personnel initiatives.
So we've done that, we're done with info reports.
So all through, what, Mr. Burrows, D?
Yep.
Are we done with D?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Commission consent items. Item number H.
I'll move it.
Mr. President, I'd like to poll two items.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Are there any polls?
Item number three and item number five and I apologize.
Three and five, okay, very good.
Just discussion.
All right, are there any other polls? If not, let's get the balance of the items and then we'll discuss items three and five.
I will second our Vice President's motion.
And if the clerk will call the roll on the balance of the items.
Okay, for approval of items four, six, seven and eight, Supervisor Rao?
Yes.
Member Popescu?
Yes.
Member Valdivia?
Yes.
Member Wilburn?
Yes.
And Member Sanchez.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number three, pulled by Supervisor Rao.
And I apologize because we, it's everybody's end of the fiscal year, so we're doing budgeting for multiple different agencies. So normally, this would be something that I would have emailed staff, but I did not have time, so I apologize. So I just wanted some points and clarification as I'm digging into things a little bit deeper. On the travel that we had recently with our two members, our Vice President and yourself, Mr. Burrows, and our President to Korea, we have some reimbursements and in the reimbursements that were listed, we have, it seems like a disproportionate amount and I think that those are, some of them on visa. So just to recap, President Valdivia has roughly $1,100 in reimbursements from that trip.
And if I may, let me stop you. This is packet page 58 that you're referring to, is that right?
Starts on 56 for the registered demands.
It's item number 60, John Valdivia reimbursement for travel to Shanghai. I did not go to Shanghai.
No, that's a typo, it's Korea.
So let the record reflect that I did not go to Shanghai, only went to South Korea. Please proceed, Ms. Rao.
Thank you. So we have 1156 there and then, Mr. Burrows, your 1447 and then Vice President Popescu is 3,000 and change. So my first question was, the difference between, two of them are in line, one of them is significantly more, is that because there were charges for the two of you gentlemen that were put on the visa card for things that were direct reimbursement to OV?
No, no, so the, on mine, and Bill can dig in further, because I don't have all the detail in front of me, on the direct reimbursement, mine includes both Shanghai and South Korea.
I see.
That is accurate, that's not a typo and then the balance of my charges were on the visa itself, so hotel and otherwise for me went on that and that includes both Shanghai and South Korea for me. So I've got two trips as opposed to the mayor's one and mine split between the two, but I can provide more detailed situation.
Now that you've clarified that you didn't go to Shanghai, it makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, thank you.
I couldn't figure out why there was a couple thousand dollars disparity between the two.
I missed the typo, so, sure.
No, that makes sense, okay.
And also, I should reflect that my reimbursement was for the completion of the whole trip versus, some of the reimbursements were for partial, like airfare versus mine was everything included.
Okay.
Yeah, and I tend to try to do that if I have something within a cycle, to try to consolidate it for efficiency purposes for staff.
And I apologize, normally I would have emailed these things to you, but digging in at midnight last night, so.
No problem, sure.
And with that, I will be happy to move the item.
Is there a second on item number three? If, all right, very good. If, there are no, can we do no objections on that? Is that, there are no objections, it's still ordered. All right, item number five, pulled by Supervisor Rao.
Right back at you. So we have, it looks like, tried to get with Edison to create them to facilitate this, so we're not paying tens of thousands of dollars waiting in construction costs. Can you help me understand what we can be doing to help facilitate that? I know I have some pretty great connections at Edison, so I'm wondering from the staff perspective, what has been done and how can we light a fire into them so we're not wasting money?
Yeah, so thankfully in this, this is the engineering portion of Jim's grant closeout. Probably next meeting, you'll have the construction side of it and what we did in this case, thankfully, we're through Edison, we got resolution on it and this is the closeout lead-in for the entire project in the future. So we've had a few items before the Commission on updates with the capital project and Jim's mentioned once or twice on where we've been at. In this case, we worked directly with the city of Highland, whose jurisdiction this right-of-way fell into and they were, the staff actually worked hand-in-hand with Jim to get Edison to pin down the date. So we actually got over the goal line on this one, but in the future, you'll be hearing from Jim and I at the time that's happening, if we encounter it again. But it's been a balancing act and thankfully, federal EDA has to bless this so that we can bring it to you, that's now happened too.
Thank you.
I have a question myself. Yes, Mr. Sanchez, yes, for professional services for the corporation, there's construction for the structure.
They're the design engineer for the project, so all of the civil engineering plans, updates, obstacles, they're responsible for under the EDA grant.
So the adjustment is for $45,000?
Yes.
How long was the delay?
So the delay, Jim, was about seven, eight months and then they have some cleanup work to do with the engineering and that's what this reflects and that's what federal EDA is approved.
So there was cleanup work involved, so this was supposed to be because of the delay with Edison?
Not completely, it's, we have to have accurate plans when we complete the project and they have the support that effort as the change.
Well, I would be more comfortable if we were to move this item to the next meeting and have the contractor actually itemize all those costs. I think it would just be a good practice that instead of just approving that $45,000, that we actually get an itemized costs. I do think, I do agree, I do think that this work needs to be done, but it shouldn't just be done on a one-page with no, nothing itemized, it's just a $45,000 addition to their original contract.
Mr. Burrows, the question is that I have, only out of consideration for completing the project, I respect Mr. Sanchez and his request to extend it for an itemized bill, but would this delay and further delay it now, I mean, we've already been waiting seven months, so how would this impact completion and finalization of this plan?
Yeah, I'm going to lean on Jim a little bit. Since you are coming back with a construction piece, are we going to be clear with federal EDA in this case if we did that as a follow-on item or do we get into closeout peril? And I'm looking at Miriam as well, so you say yes or no?
No, it will not, it will not affect it.
Okay.
The end of the grant is the end of September.
Okay, and I want to get you all the information, so answering to your question, Mayor, no, we can bring it back if that's the pleasure of the Commission.
Yeah, with direction that staff direct the contractor to itemize all those costs.
Certainly.
And as long as, I mean, of course, I wouldn't want to jeopardize our funding, jeopardize slowing the program down, so if that's, if that in fact is the case that there will be no delay, then I'd like to make a motion that we bring this item to the next, the next meeting with those costs all itemized.
Certainly, pleasure of the Commission.
Very good, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Very good, discussion?
I did have a comment.
Yes.
I did want to echo what Supervisor said. If I can relay it to the staff, if you are working with our cities and if we can be of any help when you hit roadblocks, be sure to make sure that you communicate with us so we can help you in some way and there isn't any delays or additional costs. So if you need help within our cities or contractors that we know, we can help you.
Absolutely, I'm not bashful, happy to do it.
Okay, there is the motion and the second and are there any objections? Comment? All right, if there are no objections, the clerk will record that this item has been moved to July's meeting with the request on the motion. Okay, very good, moving on to item I, Commission action items. Number nine, consider and adopt the San Bernardino International Airport Authority Budget. Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Staff requests adoption of the proposed budget reflected in this chapter for the fiscal year 2019-20. The section starts on page 85 and on page 87 is the cover sheet for the annual budget overview. The following page, on page 88, shows a pie chart and this is one of three in this section. The first one is for sources of both cash and revenue for the fiscal year 1920. I'll start off by going through the items labeled on the pie chart. First of all, starting on your left with the FBO, sources of cash and revenue are 18,343 proposed for next year, cash on hand at 2.5 million, the general fund is almost $12 million for the year, property management circling clockwise goes to 6.4 million in revenue for the year, capital projects, 6.5 million, and finally, debt service at 8.5 million. The total sources for the year on this pie chart is 54,264,328. I'm open to questions on this pie chart while we're on it.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. We have a good question. How much has this changed? We met in, the Executive Committee met with you, how much has this changed? Give the Commission members.
We met on May 30th, the three, you and Mayor Wilburn and Councilman Popescu, it changed slightly, but not enough to, you know, not in anything in the material sense, a little bit of general fund expenses and that's about it.
Okay, are there any questions?
On this one.
Comments?
Okay, going on to page 89, the pie chart reflects the uses of the, for the year 1920 and it's by fund again. Going clockwise, starting with the FBO section at 18.3 million, general fund at 11.8, clockwise again, property management uses at 7.4 million, capital projects fund, 7.3 million and debt service fund at 8.5 million. Now each of these items, both in the sources and uses, these are the funds that are reflected in our books and this is how we account for both the sources and uses. Falling on page 90, we've broken down the general fund to its sub-funds for a little bit more clarity and itemization. Got quite a few, but I'll go through them anyway, starting with vehicle and equipment maintenance on your left, again, going clockwise, we are budgeting, our proposed budget indicates a $510,000 expenditure for the next fiscal year, security expenses at 1 million, the ARF at 897,500, network services, that little sliver of green, is at 60,000, administrative costs proposed or budget is at 4.2 million, marketing at 343,000, the airfield operations at 1.8 million, the tower operations at 314,000, maintenance at a million, million dollars, the international arrivals facility at 402,000, the terminal and parking operations and operations at 525,000 and finally, the facility maintenance at 595,000. These are proposed expenditures for the next fiscal year by the sub-funds under the general fund. Falling on page 91 is a cover page for the supplemental exhibits. Page 92 shows a picture of a budget structure that we use, we've used this in the past, it hasn't changed from the previous years, and lists out on the top row, the intergovernmental revenues, the lease revenues and other sources, bond proceeds and the CMB loan proceeds. Now these are the sources of revenue that come into play for the airport. Below that, our budget structure is composed of property management fund, fixed-based operator fund, which is the Luxevere, the general fund, debt service fund and capital projects fund. So we have essentially this kind of a setup, it follows the pie charts that I just went over. Do we have any questions up to this point before I go into the rest of the report? Yes.
I'm sorry to be such a pain tonight. Mr. Burrows, were you able to forward my email with questions in it to him?
I did and he and Ms. Kassaris have an explanation of that discrepancy and if you'd like to get into that, we could do that right now.
You want to do it later or now?
We could do it now, sure.
It's just a little complicated to explain unless you have all the numbers in front of you, would you like me to attempt?
So, no, that's fine.
Or would you actually, why don't we just start with the explanation?
Okay, so I'm going to have Amber explain, in the marketing, proposed marketing budget, the supervisor found a discrepancy between what was in some of the printed exhibits for our items and what's in the budget itself. So Amber, take it away.
So the difference between the Excel file that's in front of you compared to what is actually the reporting coming out of QuickBooks is a typo. This is my living, breathing, working Excel file that I work from where I attempt to plot out where in marketing initiatives will take place, what they will cost, so I can anticipate what the budget and even potential annual contracts are going to cost. I found some items that were not calculating as numbers, they were calculating as text, so it made some discrepancies. So the numbers that are in QuickBooks are accurate, the number that is in my Excel file and even in the PowerPoint, which was a copy paste, there were some discrepancies in that that I made some errors on.
So QuickBooks means what's printed here for you and what's reflected in the budget. The exhibit was 3,000 off. The difference is contingency in the SPD conferences and meetings projection, we reduced when we finished the budget itself, the exhibit still had the old number in it.
Okay.
Thank you for catching that.
Thank you for saving everybody 20 minutes of me trying to explain.
No, it's great, it's great.
On that note, I think there is something that should be clarified because on this ex-
exhibit, it shows you the budget allocation, but that's not reflected in what actually was spent on some of these conferences because that does not include some of the travel and expenses. This is related just to attending the conference and how much money it would cost to actually attend it.
Travel is not accounted for in the marketing department. It's managed under the travel expense accounts. So what we have here would be registration fees, exhibit fees, and then under the contingency is also where I'm accounting for any time I may need to ship materials to a trade show that can't be carried with staff on vehicles or aircraft.
Okay, thank you.
And the other element with that is it's a projection. Those contingencies in those areas are to address unforeseen circumstances that we may bring before the commission during the year. Therefore, it doesn't require another budget amendment. We can certainly do those as needed, but that's why Amber structured it the way she did.
And by the way, commission members, this is important also as you got this delivered to your desk. This is the handout on some of those other items that are discussion points. But if there are no more questions, Mr. Gray, please continue. Thank you.
The next section offers detail on the budget. We've included this to show several pieces of information. If you turn to page 93, you've got a little, almost 100 pages of detail for the budget for next year. I can certainly go through each page if you'd like, but let me just do a synopsis.
Mr. Gray, I do have questions on 93 and 94.
Sure.
Fund number on income, 93, 41160, special event revenue.
Yes.
There is $150,000 extra that we're anticipating. Can staff provide why the increase?
So that is, I'll do that one. That's airshow. Cat has in queue some additional sponsorships this year. That's why that number is ticked up. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I might add, the event that we're doing here in two weeks, is that gonna, in the next fiscal year, is that reflected in here?
That will reflect under filming revenue because it's a film production.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good point.
Then, Mr. Gray, item number 94, packet page 94, marketing supplies.
Yes.
50, 323, marketing supplies. I see a budget of $22,000 and now it's going up to $140,000. Can staff provide or explain the increase, please?
So we, oh, I apologize.
Go ahead, Amber.
Go ahead, Amber.
We've added some, couple of line items to the marketing supplies account. You'll notice on, well, first of all, this packet shows an SBD airport budget as well as an FBO budget. One of the projects that we have coming up is the photo shoot. We've spoken about that in the ad hoc committee. So that was an increase of about $42,000 on the FBO side as well as the airport side. And then we increased the JetX projects line item on marketing supplies for the FBO to about $70,000. So we have funding available there for mutual initiatives.
Okay, I got it. Thank you. Appreciate that explanation.
Oh, I have one more addition to that. On the airport side, we've increased the contingencies as there for additional PR activities as related to various business increases on the airport side.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Okay, thank you. This budget for the next year is based on a couple of principles. Number one being a conservative outlook on both the expenditures and the revenue. So if we can't count on the revenues, we make sure it's not included. The expenditures are usually a little bit higher than what we spend during the year. And this has proven out to be the case over the last several years. As you indicated, you probably know how this format works. But these reports reflect all the accounts in the budget, and they also follow the budget format that I had mentioned earlier in the pie charts and in the schematic. The first column with the numbers, calling for July 18th through June 19th, is the actual expenditures and revenue to date. The next column, budget, is the budget for 1819. Dollars over budget, the third column are the dollar amounts, both positive and negative based on the differences between the first two columns and the percentage of budget. The fourth column indicates the relationship or the ratio of that difference. The final column, 19 and 20 projections, indicates again our projected budget for next year for both revenues and expenditures. We can go through, the general fund is combined. You'll see that after that on page 97, the general fund is broken down by various sub-funds, as indicated on the pie chart I talked about earlier. And examples of that are security, network services, the administration, and so forth. The accounts themselves vary in number and type per sub-fund based on their activity for their particular type of service or use. We go through, as we go through the detail of the budget, they also follow the other funds and sub-funds accordingly. I can go through each one if you'd like or answer any specific questions.
I have one question.
Yes, Mayor.
So back on page 93, under the badging, we had a budget of $10,000 but didn't spend it. Now we've upped it to $20,000. And then again, over here on 97, why the anticipation so large? A difference?
We've got more folks working on the airport and requiring either replacement badges or ones that they've lost, so.
About much more.
Yes, we believe it will be that much for this coming fiscal year based on the anticipated activities. Comes with employees and so forth.
And Mayor, on that point, there also is a consequential increase in badging revenue to help offset that. So the key fobs that we make everybody have out there to get into any of the tenant properties or on the airfield itself, there's a cost to produce that for Jack and his team. There's an associated fee that the tenants pay us to help cover that cost.
Okay.
And on that note, correct me if I'm wrong, but did we update the process and the computerized system that you use for that in the last year or that's been the same?
So that is still underway. We have more updates pending and will brief you as those things come out.
Does that require more expenditures or?
At this point, it's more of a process than an expense. And looks like it'll stay that way for the time being. But this is more tenant coordination, and there's a revenue and expense associated with it.
I was surprised when I went and got my badge how busy the badging office was. There are literally 10 to 15 people waiting at times because so many people are working at the airport and they're getting a badge and they have to go to the process.
And it's not just like, you know, long-term tenants, Mayor. It's folks that are doing project work out here, things of that nature. So more activity, more expense, more revenue.
Okay, very good.
I can continue real quickly. I'd like to on a couple of these other funds. The property management fund combined starts on page 111. Again, like the general fund, it combines the sub-funds of the property management activity and operations for the airport. The sub-funds fold up into this particular report. The property management has quite a few sub-funds on it to account for the various buildings and areas that we lease. On page 134 begins the capital project fund. And this one goes through page 136. This has a lot to do with the construction projects that are currently taking place and have, or ones that have taken place in the past and continue through this next fiscal year. Page 137 is our debt service fund. We have some revenue, excuse me, refinancing proceeds and so forth. It's one page. It's not much activity. On page 138 is the FBO combined. This has a number of sub-funds that roll up into this particular report. And this is the Luxiver that handles the fuel sales. And a lot of the fueling operations such as transferring fuels between airplanes and so forth. This FBO is a profit center, and we treat it as such on the financial statements. And it consists of, the expenditures consist of salaries and expenses and other operational expenses based on the activity of fueling and other operational activities there. The cost of fuel sales is a large amount. It has been, and we expect an increase in the future.
I have a question about that. I know that we put in all the fuel cells to the FBO, but obviously those fuel cells not deal with the FBO directly, but deals with the operations around the whole airport. Is there any way that perhaps on a quarterly basis, we can break it down for us and tell us, you know, this is how much fuel we're selling, but this is how much of it is due to FedEx, UPS. This is how much of it is because of sheriff. This is how much of it is because of firefighting activities. And this is how much of it is because of the FBO.
We certainly.
Just so we get a better sense of, that would help us gauge the, you know, which areas is growing and which ones is not.
Certainly. Can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Yes, we can certainly do that. Below the revenue is the cost of fuel. This is the fuel that we buy to sell, broken down into both ABGAS and JAA. JAA is the more sold, most sold fuel or more sold fuel than the ABGAS. And again, we expect that to increase as a result of increased airport activity, specifically the airplanes needing fuel when they come in.
And I'll just touch on one clarification of that. When we talk about fuel sales, much like we do with the rest of the budget, these are actual projected fuel sales based on the customers we have today, not customers we anticipate or might get during the year. That's how we run these numbers to date.
Again, you know, being conservative on the future prospects of fuel sales for the year. On page 145, our reports is the report of the budget by itself. So you can see a very clean, one-column report for each of the line items that we had, that are reflected in the accounting system for ease of viewing and analysis and so forth.
So we end the year with a $250,000 profit, so to speak. Okay.
So that takes us to pretty much the rest of the section. We have a few pages in the back that show some of the fee structures that are involved with the airport on page 192. Parking fees, fee schedules, warehouse fees, fuel fees, US custom fees, and so forth for your review. And on page 195, in the real tiny print, we have additional cost information with regard to meetings and conferences and so forth that we just discussed. And that carries us to page 195, which is the end of this particular section. And I'm open to any questions.
So packet page 195 and 196.
Yes.
Is the blowout here that we received on our desk. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Any comments? Done, we'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All right.
Just for clarity's sake, so approving this budget includes everything that we anticipate we're gonna be spending as it relates to marketing or other activities?
So this is the budget. The individual expenses then are brought back if we have certain thresholds on procurement that are needed, but this would launch the efforts going forward. Yes.
And in approving this budget, this includes the items that's in front of us, which goes into detail as to what our marketing activities entail.
With the important clarification the supervisor raised, yes.
Correct. Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear on, so everybody's not surprised as to why we're spending money on something else later. Because we've been through this every year for the last three years in detail, specifically where we're spending money as it relates to travel and conferences.
And if circumstances change, we'll advise you.
Everybody's clear on it because there were some questions about that. And I look back and, you know, not everybody was here a year ago, but myself and Penny were both here when we approved the same thing last year. I just want to make sure.
However, I believe that we do need to look at a policy.
True.
That clarifies and that nothing and everything is transparent, including the commissioners as well as the public to the public.
Absolutely. I agree 100%. And I should also point out that anything that's been expensed in the past has been approved. With each meeting, when we do demands register, every member has the opportunity to look through it and ask questions like we have. Just like today, we had some questions about why was this this much and why was that? So that was an opportunity that was given throughout the year, and we want to continue to do that. So I agree.
Excuse me, can you please repeat the motion again for me? And the second I got was Supervisor Rao. Who was the motion for that item?
Mayor Navarro with the second by Supervisor Rao.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, let's do a roll call on this one. This is probably important for record keeping.
Member Navarro?
Yes.
Member Rao?
Yes.
Member Papezku?
Yes.
Member Valdivia?
Yes.
Member Lilburne?
Yes.
And Member Sanchez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Item number 10, approve certain professional services contract for fiscal year 2019-20. Mr. Gray?
Thank you. Item number 10, starting on page 197. Staff requests approval of certain professional services contracts for the next fiscal year 2019-20. And also to authorize the executive director to execute all related documents. On page 198, we have a list of all the consultants that we expect to engage in next fiscal year. We have the consultant name and the not-to-exceed amount on the contracts that are proposed. The staff is recommending that we enter into these contracts for services that are needed for the next fiscal year. On page 199, you'll see a summary of these services right up next to their names or the company name. So for example, Cole Huber LLP, type of service, general counsel for the general matters related to the San Bernardino International Airport Authority, litigation and other matters. And the list goes down. Myrow Edwards Lewin and Tok, special counsel, climate tech, specialized security access control system, Meaden Hunt, specialized consultant, David Tershen, associate, advocacy services, Boston Fox Teague International, marketing and advertising services, image builders, performing in construction site supervision, Tom Dotson and Associates, environmental issues and projects, 321 Inc., also known as Imagine Systems. They provide preventive maintenance on our IT systems here. Air Transport Business Development, business development and consulting services for the FBO, Luxiver, Arrowhead Consulting. This is Air Force Base Reuse Environmental Consulting Services, Jericho Airport Biologist Services, Rogers Anderson, Malady and Scott. These are our independent auditors. They do our financial statement audit and have been for the last several years. They are currently doing it now. Hilltop Geotechnical, it's on-call material testing services. Lugwick Engineering, on-call general professional engineering services. Kaufman and Associates, planning and environmental assessment services. That's the list. These do not include, or these agreements do not include, the grant-funded projects, which may require separate consultant agreements, but the fees will be eligible grant-funded expenditures. So in other words, we can get, or we can apply and request reimbursement of any grant-funded expenditures that may be involved. I conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. I do have some questions. You have items, consultants named A through Q. What procedures do we follow to ensure that we get competitive pricing from consultant services? And how and in what form do we execute RFP? And of these here presented, how many have a longer term than three years?
Well, I can answer the first couple of questions. Our RFP process is described in our purchasing manual. And up to, for example, anything under $1,000 does not require bids, although we still get quotes. Anything between $1,000 and $24,999 requires three written quotes or verbal quotes. We have a form to record those quotes. That form reflects not only the name of the company that we request a bid from, but a point of contact and a telephone number and address. If a company cannot provide us with a quote after we've asked, we put down the reason as to why. I review those myself when they come through. $25,000 and above to $100,000 requires written documentation and also described in detail in our purchasing policy. I have the purchasing policy describing these issues for the last several years, as long as I've been here, about five years. With regard to the term of the contracts, to your last question. With regard to the term of the contracts, to your last question, we have that information. But for example, our legal and auditing firm contracts are five-year, ten years. And at that point, we go out for the procurement process again. And we will do so, I think, with the accounting firm here fairly shortly, with legal firms as well. With regard to the construction contracts, usually those, I mean, my view, or at least in my memory, don't last for more than five years, except for a few.
Well, I appreciate the consultants' perspectives, and please understand, let me provide some context. The context for taxpayers is that we don't want to appear that we're just having close relationships with contractors, consultants, that have been friends to the organization or part of the organization.
Sure.
So when, when, at what threshold point do we say, you know what, we really should notice the public invite bids on consulting services? And, and how, how do we ensure that we're getting best competitive rates here and the scopes of services so that we get our biggest bang for the dollar?
Well, our, our awards for contracts and consultants and so forth are based on best value as well as those items that you had mentioned. With regard to kind of vetting the, the consultants and contracts for the issues that you mentioned, I leave it up to the experts, such as construction folks that are, you know, such as Jim Harris and Mike Burrows, Mark Gibbs, to go there to fulfill and ensure that those items that you had mentioned are prevented from happening.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
In addition to that, I hold annual workshops for everyone, and I invite everyone, including the contractors and the commissioners and so forth, that speak to exactly what you just said, that conflicts of interest, issues with regard to close relationships or non-arm-length relationships with contractors resulting in unfair bidding, unfair contractual relations, and so forth are strictly forbidden. And we do that every year with all the staff here, and it's a, I think, a very good preventative method to prevent that from happening. I also review the contracts every once in a while myself, the bigger ones, and I will inquire and research to make sure that, where I can from my viewpoint anyway, to make sure that there are no obvious relationships between our staff and the construction firm itself. In addition to that, some of these, some of the work that we require is very specialized, especially in the engineering and environmental, the consultants that deal with the Air Force consulting may limit the number of resources that we may tap into to request bids. It's a very good question, and we're, it's always on our minds to prevent that from happening. Mike, can you add anything to that?
And, and again, if, you know, there is during the year, an operational need that we identify where additional services are required, we will typically do a solicitation at that time, advise the commission. So any RFP we do, we get your consent and approval, and it's on your agenda. So I hope that helps clarify too a bit.
So just to make sure, if we address the mayor's question and maybe help us understand, what we are proving here is a budget amount that we anticipate these firms would utilize. We as a board have a discretion at any time to say to you, we believe though it's time for us to perhaps relook at each or all of them, whatever we want, and issue a system by which we look at options.
Yeah, no, you can, you can certainly do that at any time. So the budget that you just took action on has an allocation to support this. These are all time and charges amount not to exceed, so these are not givens, and we could go out for additional quotes at any time you wish.
And if, if we choose to engage in that process, what does the policy say that we go about it? Do we call you? Do we talk about it here as a group and say, let's look at this particular group? Or how do we go about that process?
If there are any questions or if you have particular areas you want to look into, then just notify me, and then we'll agendize an item related to that at the next meeting. And that's how we've done it, you know, for, for the past years.
And I had some questions just about some of the contracts themselves, so I don't know if anybody else has questions, but I just had some general questions. It, given the amount of numbers we're having to look at, it's hard for us to gauge as to how much we spent before and how much we spend now. So I'm only basing it on my memory, but I'm looking at BFT, which is Boston Teague International. And the amounts that are shown there, how are they comparable to last year? Is there a significant increase or about the same? Help me understand that.
So there is, and Amber, correct me on this, but there is a slight increase projected here for the projects that she mentioned, because there is some advertising support related to that. But I do believe in, in your tenure with BFT, which was, you know, one that was formally bid, as Bill mentioned, we've not expensed their entire budget. Is that accurate, Amber, or correct me if I'm wrong?
That's correct. We've typically come in under budget every year with BFT's contract, and the reason why there is what appears to be a significant increase this year is that we're reconvening a photography project, which is a pretty expensive project that's being spread across the FBO's budget and the airport's budget for marketing supplies. Additionally, on the airport side, during, during the various ad hoc meetings that we had this year, there was a discussion about commercial aviation advertising and marketing. And so you'll notice that we have created a budget allocation for that topic to look at various marketing activities that we can do to enhance the airport's, airport's message. And BFT, while they do provide, they provide a lot of services for the department, they're basically an extension of staff, and so they provide graphic design, trafficking, so they negotiate on our behalf for the advertising placements. And then you'll notice that the very last item on both budgets, the professional services section, the nominal fees that they provide for their, for their services that they provide.
So for example, so within their contract, we may engage in some new photography, video. Do we not look to see who we hire for those specific items, or do we let BFT, we give them a budget and say, this is how much money you, you have to work with, and they then do the, the process of finding the filming and all that? So help me understand that.
He has a photographer that he has as part of his staff, and it's the exact same team that came out four years ago to do the previous photo shoot, and they help us with securing the various equipment. He has himself a photographer and I believe two production assistants, and with that we go through a whole process of storyboarding and planning and plotting and, and arranging equipment and personnel to support the shoot.
But with the potential Jetx, you know, co-marketing involvement, we are going to be on that item, looking at other quotes from other film providers, but that's an allocation should we elect to use his company. And that's something we would bring back. Our intent was to the ad hoc committee, once we get actual pricing for the film shoots.
Correct. And that's kind of where I was going with it, because one of the reasons we wanted to reengage the ad hoc committee is to kind of look more closely on how we're spending money, and is it really, you know, we're getting the best bank for our buck?
Yep.
And I know then, for example, on the filming, when I talk to some of the folks and tell them how much money we spend, they're shocked, and they're like, you could definitely do it less. In fact, you and I attended a conference where when we talked about how much we would spend, they're like, no way, there's no way you guys should spend that amount. So it's, I, I think it's important for us to deep, dig a little deeper into how we go about expanding some of these marketing things, so we make sure we, we reach the right area.
Certainly.
I may. Mayor Lilber.
And that goes back to policy. So when we're at the ad hoc committee, these things should be brought up to the ad hoc so we can set the policy as opposed to wait till now, because we did know that we had some, some of the filming issues coming up. And so again, I think setting clear policy would help us.
I agree. Thank you.
Actually, on that same note, on F and G, for those consultants, I know assuming we're going to have a business development director, how is this going to complement each other? Are we doing, are we duplicating services here?
So, so great point. So what we have here, to be conservative, is an allocation, should, should we elect to use those services? As I mentioned in prior years, we've, we've not done that on every single item, but the, the new person on board is going to work hand in hand to review this, give feedback where there's value, and we can certainly provide updates as that process engages, so that there's not a direct duplication, because they're going to be part of the decision-making process as part of our team. So it's a great point.
Okay. All right.
Okay, very good. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to accept it.
I'll move it.
All right, with those noted, Sanchez and.
Sanchez as motion and Papezku as second?
Oh, I'm sorry. You made one? Sorry.
You both did it at the same time.
All right, and if you would please call the roll.
Yes. Member Navarro?
Yes.
Member Rao?
Yes.
Member Papezku?
Yes.
Member Valdivia?
Yes.
Member Lilber?
Yes.
Member Sanchez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 11 has been moved to the July meeting at the request of Supervisor Rao. Moving on to item number 12, consider and discuss a report on the status of the strategic plan for our airport. Mr. Burrows?
So in the interests of your time and deference to your schedules, this was something that we briefly discussed at the last meeting. Staff has provided direction to agendize it again here. And being that this is a, a large entailed process and an important one, particularly for you to provide feedback of how you want this, you know, plan to, to be directed as far as key initiatives, just as a refresher, the original plan we've now had in place, we're coming to the five-year end of it, which is in December of this year. And the strategic priorities, what I'd like to do in the interest of time is, if it pleases the commission, follow up with each of you individually, we'll all reach out, kind of go through the, the structure of what we have to date, start soliciting some of that feedback, and then we can schedule an actual workshop to go through that. But I'd like to walk through with each of you, you know, kind of the how and the why here, in the interest of your time as well. So that would be my request to the chair, if that would suffice for you all.
A workshop with all of us at once?
Absolutely. But, but to prep, allow me to help with staff to prep for that, I'd like to at least go through sort of the background, the history with you each, and then we would agendize a workshop based around some of that feedback. So I'm getting the information you were looking for.
Would the workshop run concurrent with a normal regular meeting?
That's, that's the intent, is we agendize a workshop.
The challenge is every time we do that, we end up putting this at the end, and then we kept kind of punting down the street.
And that's where I want to sort of work on, on the process with you, so that we apply enough time to that to make it beneficial for you and the commission.
How about this? Is there consensus among the commission members? I would like to have a specific meeting just for the workshop.
And we, we had done that leading up to the last plan, and that's what I'm suggesting we do.
I think, I think we need to do that separate and apart from a regular meeting, because it allows for dialogue, discussion, and a lot of us talking, which is important.
So on that note to the chair, can we, since we're all here on the same dais and making decisions about the next, can we come up with a date that we all agree on and it works with our schedules?
The last Wednesday in the month would be a great opportunity. I have a suggestion.
That's your schedule. Let's hear everybody else's.
More from the 30,000-foot level. We have meetings that are scheduled on a regular published basis that keep moving. I need to help understand, why do they keep moving? We build my schedule for six, eight weeks out around your schedule.
Yep.
So help me.
That's a good point.
We all have alternates to be here when we're not here.
Right.
So why do we keep moving these and with such short notice?
So in, in a couple of instances, you know, we had, you know, some, some quorum difficulties.
Even with our alternates?
Even with, with the alternates, and the other part of it is you had myself or the president out of town. That was one instance. And then we requested, and you, you've been very gracious, and I, and it's difficult for staff too sometimes, so I appreciate the point, but in, in those instances, that's, that's part of it. But yes, we do have alternates and, and we do get a quorum that, loud and clear.
So I just got a notice from my scheduler today that we've canceled the July meeting already.
No, it's not officially been canceled.
But you're looking to cancel it.
Not, not to cancel.
No, they have a date, but different times.
We do.
The times are fluctuating.
Yep, and so we've.
So is it not going to be July 24th?
We don't know that, because we haven't found a, an alternate date where a quorum for this body outside of the 24th has, has worked yet. So no, we've made, we've just had staff call.
I'm so confused. I thought we had a scheduled meeting July 24th.
You do. That is correct.
And you don't want to move that?
And we have not changed that date. We had a request with, with the mayor, asking to see if there's an alternate date possibly. So we've been querying you all to see if there's another opportunity to conduct the July meeting. We don't have a date as of yet. There's not one we found yet that works.
An alternate date.
So.
We have a lot of mayors.
So Mayor Valdivia, as president of the commission.
Supervisor, the reason why we're, we're contemplating a move on the July meeting is only because I'm out of town during the SBIA meeting, which is on the 24th. So we would consider, and, and that's why we're having staff poll commission members, to have back-to-back meetings, IBDA meeting meet on the 17th, which is normal, right?
Well, that, that is one, because we've had a staff request to IBDA, they took action to pick that date. That is confirmed for IBDA. We don't have a date on the.
And the following day is have a, have a SBIA meeting.
So because we had it scheduled on the 24th, I'm out of town on when he wants it, and I, I plan my out-of-town dates on the dates that you gave us.
Completely understand that.
Very frustrating.
So how about the 31st? I mean, what, what are your thoughts on July 31st? You're out.
I don't understand. I guess I'm confused. We have a president and a chair and a chair-elect. Did we not have a quorum?
So we do on the 24th, absent the, the mayor's attendance, is that correct, Jennifer?
We have not confirmed that yet, but I believe we would, because they usually schedule ahead of time on the mayor's and supervisor's calendars.
Yep. So, so on that date, absent the mayor's attendance, there could be a meeting.
I know, it's okay, you're out of town.
And another alternate date over what we've called about.
Well, I mean, I, I would, so the item really, let's get back to the point, and I think the point is, we do need to have a strategic workshop. We, we would probably have a separate and apart meeting from, from a regular meeting. Maybe in August, first part of September, but I, I would suggest that we have a strategic plan workshop, separate and apart from SBIA.
We can do that.
And just poll, have staff members poll the commission members. I think back to the point of, of the item that is agendized is to have this discussion. It's important. It provides direction to our staff, and it gives a good executive outlook as to what, what the commission members want as prioritization. So let's continue the, we'll work offline on the final dates of the July meeting. We'll rely on staff to coordinate that. So item number 12, is there anything that you need from us, or?
That was the feedback I needed, and I appreciate it.
Okay, very good. I do have an issue on packet page 246. The bullet point two is it seeks to consistently increase airport business activity, including aircraft operations, employment, fuel salaries, airport services, et cetera. And Mike, I really do admire and appreciate your service to the airport, and I want to work with you continually on how do we refine these so that they're more specific, so that we can really hone in on specific. And that was just one example that I found, that there's generalities, and I understand the, the point. We can't go down rabbit trails all the time on specific minutia, but my hope is that the strategic, strategic plan would allow us as commission members to really hone in on specific measured tools. So that we, we can, you know, continue to provide leadership and at the same time allow a, a good focus for our, our commission.
Certainly, and, and just a footnote to that, the structure of this plan, the composition of it, moves from general to specific.
Right.
We can certainly look at, at different structures, and that's the, the feedback I'm really looking for from you, because it's, it allows your staff to be that much more efficient, and we save time and money as a result.
Very good. All right, commission members, let's, let's move on to item number 13, strategic plan initiatives.
So this one's a little different, and, and so for the current year, what we have done, and again, this will be up on our website, so to communicate results to the public in a clear, concise fashion, our clerk of the board team, again, has. board team, again, has developed an Esri story map, so that this can be out there for the public. And I'd like him to just walk through it with you, and then we'll give you the link, so you can provide feedback once it's live. So if you could do a brief overview, please, Jennifer.
Certainly. So what we have in front of you is our 2018 SEBIAS story map. And again, we've used the cascade format for this year's presentation, and we will review for you all of the wonderful things that have happened in 2018. And I will now hand it over to my staff analyst, Jennifer Rodriguez, who's responsible for the creation of the story map.
We're having issues with our video. Continuing to annual commercial aircraft activity, in December 2018, total annual commercial aircraft operations increased to 2,331, significantly surpassing 2017 numbers, which was 723. Our next initiative is airport operations and business development. Air cargo is quickly growing at the airport. In November 2017, UPS began continuous operations. In 2018, they added aircraft and employees to their operations. Our newest tenant FedEx began continuous operations October 2018, operating two daily flights in fourth quarter of 2018. And due to the increase of annual air cargo activity, the SPD moved into annual federal aviation administration grant entitlement funding. Maintenance service companies continue to expand at SPD, providing a full range of MRO services. As of 2018, SPD house four MROs, Unical Aviation, AeroPro Executive Jet Maintenance, and Pulser Aviation Services. Our next initiative is Luxiver SPD. Luxiver welcomes corporate customers and general aviation pilots to enjoy one of the country's best FBOs. Last year, Luxiver celebrated its fifth-year anniversary and are continuing to work towards a successful future. And to view the first five years of the FBO, you can click here. Airport infrastructure. Through grant funding from the FAA, EDA, and the IVDA, the SEBIAS is able to develop airport infrastructure improvements. Most notable was the completion of Hanger 795, where FedEx is currently at. This is the before picture and an after. SPD and the community. SPD Fest returned for its fourth annual air show in November 2018, with an attendance of over 12,000 people. And SPD Fest featured headline performances such as the Patriots, as well a car show featuring over 200 classic cars. As well, live performances on our award-winning concert stage. SPD Fest is scheduled for November 2nd and 3rd of this year. For additional information, you can visit our website and follow us on our social media accounts. And these also go directly to the accounts. SPD offers an excellent location for the film industry. The notable CBS show SEAL Team filmed here last year. And these are just some of the shoots done last year. And educational alliances. The SPD is partners with the various schools within the community, most recently with Generation Go, a new student internship program launched by the San Bernardino City Unified School District and the County of San Bernardino Workforce Development Board. And on May 16, interns Brandon Prado and Lisette Acosta presented their experience at the airport, with attendance from IVDA and SEBIAS staff and representatives from the school district and workforce development. Roadwide Wings has over 50 years of aviation training. Recently, they have partnered with the San Bernardino Valley College, which gives SBVC students the opportunity to complete their commercial pilot license while pursuing an And the SBRETC is the only facility in the Western U.S. that provides airport firefighter training as required by the FAA. The center continues to meet the mandatory curriculum required by the FAA. And with a successful year, we want to say thank you, commission members, staff, and community members, for making this a great year. And we're looking forward to continuing to work with every single one of you. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. We are so excited to see a yearbook of sorts on the accomplishments of our great airport. We're, again, very grateful for your leadership, Mike, Mr. Burrows, and we appreciate what you're doing, our staff members, and all of the behind-the-scenes work that goes to make this a very, very flourishing opportunity for our region, so we're grateful. Moving on to item number 14. Approve the form of an appointed agreement with Michael Burrows, who served in the capacity of executive director. Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. Huber. Mr. Burrows has served as the executive director for the past several years, and served with the capacity of acting as executive director for that. He has been at IVDA and at the airport since 1997. He oversees all administrative and operational matters for IVDA and SEBIAS, as we all know. This agreement, so the public can have a split 50-50 between SEBIAS and IVDA, each agency responsible for half the cost, and he oversees both of those public agencies. The amount of salary listed in the grant is the full cost for the executive director. There are no expenses the staff recommends for the...
Mr. Huber, did you say 1997?
I did.
Is that one of your, like, pulser popular?
I did. Well, I can read photos when we do look at that.
All right, well, it's before you, commission members.
Go ahead and move the aisle.
Second area. Very good discussion. Comment? Yes. Mr. Burrows, thank you very much. You've brought this agency to where it should be, where cargo and logistics is concerned. The future now faces us for our next track, and we'll be looking forward to working with you diligently to make that come to fruition. So I want to thank you.
No, thank you all, and it is a pleasure to work with each and every one of you, and I'm really excited to see what you have in mind for the direction moving forward. Thank you.
And I guess it should be noted that one of the things that we're probably going to look at is try to give clear directions with the goal setting as we move forward, so everybody's clear as to what our next expectations are. So, in approving this agreement, we don't go into that much detail, but we may anticipate meeting as a group to assess and find the right direction.
I welcome it. As you know, I prefer having clear goals, and I thank you for that.
Mr. Burrows, I've had a very short tenure here, but in my short stint, and more recently as a president, I just, I really do enjoy your very professional manner. Every time I've called you, or that maybe I can't get ahold of you, you call me back, and I appreciate the camaraderie that we've enjoyed in these recent weeks and months since I've been the president. I, too, want to say thank you very much. You've been a great, great, important piece of this entire operation. I'll be supporting this contract tonight, and I appreciate you, and I appreciate what you're doing for our airport. And so, if there are no other comments, we'll call the roll.
I kind of want to echo their sentiments. However, I think that you have surrounded yourself with a great staff as well, and I appreciate, I just, sometimes I get a little caught up with a lack of communication with you and I, and I guess I like more, and so I'll look forward to that, working with you a little closer in the upcoming...
I welcome it, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Very good. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Member Navarro?
Yes.
Member Rao?
Yes.
Member Papezcu?
Yes.
Member Valdivia?
Yes.
Member Lilburn?
Yes.
And Member Sanchez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Item number 15, review the status of the action plan for the airport. Mr. Burrows?
So this is end of the line for this particular segment here. At your next meeting, I'll propose a timeline, and, you know, some of the workshop feedback you've given me, I'll try to incorporate a draft schedule for that, so you, as a body, can look at some of that after I garner some more feedback. But thank you for your support on the budget, and ensuring that this operation continues to operate and function. So we've just finished that strategic plan review in total. Really, on the next update to this, I'll try to forecast some timelines to get to completion on that, and so that you have ample time to have those workshops and give us, as your staff, the direction you want to see this airport go. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Item number J, added and deferred items. I don't see any.
No, we have none.
Very good. And now is our public session comment period. I have two pink slips. Mr. Ramirez, Jose Ramirez. Welcome, sir. Thank you for your patience, and we appreciate you. Thank you, sir. You're recognized for three minutes, and welcome.
I appreciate it. Honorable commissioner, how you guys doing? We're almost done. I just wanted to come here and I want to say, you know, I, we're part of the community, all those folks you saw here today, and just to let you guys know that, we as a labor union, we've worked with you guys well, through our contractors here, doing work for the airport, all the facilities here, whether there's tilt-up construction or runways, to know that, you know, we have our folks, that are local folks here, that live here in the area, that live in the surrounding areas, that right now are working elsewhere, and are looking forward for these projects to start up, so they can come home and be closer to home and work here where they live. And just to know, like I said, we are skilled, we are trained, we are safe, you know, and we're here to work with you guys. Where I said, anything we can do to help this along, we're here to work with you guys. And to know, like I said, we have young folks through our apprenticeship programs, so whether they're graduating high school or folks looking for a second career, to know that they can come out and be proud of their city that they helped build, especially, like I said, having an awesome facility like this. And like I said, anything we can do to help, we're here, and to know, like I said, that we are the community, please listen to us and work with us. We appreciate it.
Mr. Ramirez, you represent Leona Local 783.
Yes.
And we appreciate you, sir. Thank you for your patience tonight. Our next speaker is Sean Martinez. Mr. Martinez, welcome, and sir, thank you for your patience as well. We appreciate your patience, and thank you for coming.
No problem. Enjoyed all the discussion, so. As you said, my name's Sean Martinez, I'm with the Teamsters. We're part of the SB Airport Communities Coalition. You heard from a number of our folks earlier. I just wanted to, first off, I did want to thank you for allowing most of our folks to speak before a closed session, so they didn't have to wait through this entire meeting. So, I did want to bring up a couple concerns, though, regarding the ability for the community to have input into what's going on at this body. Obviously, the meetings are in the afternoon. We had about 45 people show up today. Most of our folks couldn't make it at this time. It's a very difficult time for people who work, and their job isn't to do the kind of thing that I do every day. They have to be somewhere. So I would throw out maybe a suggestion. I know other entities do this, maybe some type of rotating schedule to where we do have evening meetings at some point, so that the community can more, can better engage. A lot of the folks that we've talked to don't even know that this meeting happens, and a lot of them are not able to come. Regarding the translation accommodation, I was a bit disappointed in Mr. Valdivia's response to our request. I think it's a pretty reasonable request, given that there is no translation being done in this meeting, that when we do have somebody who needs to speak in a language that's translated, that we have a little bit of extra time. I understand that your counsel has suggested that it's at your discretion. We're going to be looking into that issue, but I would just suggest that we figure something out, so that folks from the community who need that accommodation are accommodated. And then finally, just regarding the canceled meetings, you know, we've been talking to the community about the Eastgate project for four months or so now. We had wanted to come and talk to you guys with the larger group like we did today the past couple months, and those meetings were canceled, you know, I think within a week, at least when we noticed, it was maybe within a week of the scheduled time. And we'd like to just suggest that if that's going to happen, it sounds like there's some stuff that needs to be worked out, but if that happens, that there is a little bit more notice. And I am kind of having trouble understanding why that would happen if we do have a quorum, because, you know, especially in, I think in May, we were planning on coming with a bunch of folks, and we had to call them all at the last minute and say, hey, it's canceled. So that was a difficult thing for us. So those are my concerns. I just wanted to get them on the record. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. And I do appreciate your patience, and we will study the Spanish translation services. That's my commitment, Mr. Martinez. We have great recommendation from Supervisor Rao, and we're going to study it and work with Mr. Huber to make those special accommodations. So we will begin diligently working to access those points on translation services. Okay, thank you. I don't see any more pink slips. We're moving on to our commission member comment. Any commission members wishing to make an announcement or a comment?
Just general announcements. The mayor and myself, in fact, we had planned three meetings, and one of them got canceled, but we had a really good meeting, and Mr. Gibbs was with us yesterday. We met with a large cargo operator in Los Angeles, and we all, Mr. Gibbs had a very good presentation, it was a very successful one. We also met with some gentlemen that are going to help us deal directly with Chinese consulate. We're directly starting to talk to them and getting them to perhaps come visit us. We've been working with the consulate corps now for a number of years, but that's the one consulate we've had a really challenging issue with. The exciting part in that meeting was that, and I've talked about this before, we talk a lot about aviation and all the things that can happen at this airport, but there's lots of land and opportunity to develop outside of the airport. And one of the gentlemen we talked to is literally looking at moving his business from China to the U.S., and it's not just a distribution center, it's actually a manufacturing facility that builds cloud computing. And there's a lot of that happening, and not to get political, but the tariffs are really getting a hold. Everybody complained about that, and the Chinese economy is really suffering as a result, and you'll see some movement as a result of manufacturing actually coming to the U.S. And it was great for us to actually confirm that. And then we had, Mr. Gibbs and I self had a meeting yesterday, the afternoon. One of the gentlemen that Mike and I met at the last con... the gentlemen that Mike and I met at the last conference come and visit us, he represents a large charter company that's going to move almost a million passengers, mostly in Europe, but they're also looking to move in this direction, and he came and he toured the airport, and he was absolutely amazed about our facility, given the fact that he's traveled all over the world, so he was very, very impressed, and will continue to engage them, and in fact, we're putting him in touch with, we looked at some of the airplanes, their charter operator doesn't have the airplanes they're looking for, and Unical's giving them lots of options, so we even looked at that as a possibility. So those are just general comments about some of the activities that transpired in the last two days, and I want to thank the Mayor because some of these meetings were initiated through him and his contacts, and these are people that we didn't have to pay any money for, we pay lots of money to consultants to open doors for us, but these are people who are really out to help get the airport going, and these are people who've made their own time and energy, and they happen to know the right people, and it's amazing to me that for someone who's never been on the airport, he sure seems to have a lot of airport contacts. So anyway, I just want to show my appreciation for that, just a general announcement.
Thank you, Ovi. Just to update what Ovi just said, last night about midnight, I get a email that we do have, the good news is we do have, we're granted access to the Consul General of Los Angeles for China, and so we will be arranging those meetings very, very soon. So we're excited, that is a big, big win and step in the right direction for us. I'll work with Mr. Burrows on how to schedule that, but these are exciting times, we're excited about these, I mean, Ovi just said it, we've been waiting to make that contact, and we're proceeding in the right direction, and so we're just grateful. I enjoy working with the team, and this is a great, great opportunity, it's a win for us, not just me, it's us, and this is an us game, this is a Team San Bernardino and a Team San Bernardino International Airport, so this is a great, great opportunity for us all. All right, thank you very much, if there's no more Commission comments, this meeting is adjourned, thank you for attending.